Government and Tom Robinson, our Director of Finance will be guiding us through our budget. So, good evening, Tom.
Hello, all. If you could open to page nineteen of the budget.
Tom, is your microphone on?
I think so.
Everybody here okay?
So, on page nineteen of the budget is the Board of Selectmen's Budget. Budget generally remains the same as this has the stipends and the Board of Ed, Board Clerk in it. And the only increase here is for program services, which would allow the selectmen to attend some more programs, trainings, events, things of that nature. So, that's the only proposed increase to this budget. Page twenty-one is the first Select Woman's Budget. There are no changes to this budget other than proposed salary increases. All other expenditures remain the same. Page twenty-three is the Ethics Commission. This is a budget for the Ethics Commission to hold some meetings for a Board Clerk and then some miscellaneous items. Majority of the miscellaneous costs so far have been their P.O. box and then some other miscellaneous items they need. Page twenty-five is the Probate Court. This is a fee set by the court and so we're kind of, this is our allocation of that fee. And that's what we kind of required to pay. Page twenty-seven is the Elections. Elections is, it's your voter of registrars. There's two voters there, two registrars there. And it's for their time for the year as well as the meetings and then voter canvassing. So, we saw a slight uptick in the canvassing efforts that were required, so we increased the budget slightly there. And we, there's not too much else there except for the slight increase to their payroll. This is the one that fluctuates based upon what is occurring. So, we were close to the budget this year and we're, you know, gonna, hopefully the next years we'll be able to sit right where it is or hopefully be better. Page twenty-nine is the Finance Department. So far, the Finance Department has, we had a pretty eventful fiscal year 2018 and nineteen so far. We went out and did some bond ratings, got S and P to rate us a double A plus for our $10 million issuance. We were also rated a A, little A three at Moody's for our other outstanding general obligation unlimited tax bonds. We implemented a transition to, from our legacy payroll solution to the ADP as a software as a solution. We have some transition in personnel of retiree. And we have some, a little bit of additional costs in maintenance as some of our service contracts for our financial system. The continual increase as well as some of the requirements for the Affordable Care Act require some additional expenses. But reasonable increase there, we believe. On page thirty-one, we have the Collector of Revenue. This is made up of the Collector of Revenue for taxation. She, the Collector is a salary union position with step movement. Contracts with the Quality Data System, our tax service. And there's some conference and meetings dues for training and continuing professional education for the Collector. Page twelve is our Assessors Department, which is made of our Assessment and a half-time clerk. There's service contracts that are required to run the products within quality data, some of the products and solutions there for the CAMA system with Tyler and IAS World. There was a $1,500 required increase in the, in the budget for service contracts, which was an annual fee for a certain type of licensing fee for the software provider. So, that's a required increase to that number in that budget. And the only other increase was salary. Board of Assessment Appeals is just, I think it was more of a correction to the budget there with the members stipends and really no movement although the percentage looks big, it was just a correction. Page forty, page thirty-seven, which is the Town Council Budget. I know last year we made an effort to try to minimize the spending there. I believe that the Select Woman's Budget here represents a no change as we continue to meet the goals and objectives set forth in last year's budget. Page fifteen is the Town Clerk's Budget. There were minimal changes to this budget. There was some payroll increases for the clerk as well as the full-time assistant. And there was some cost savings measures in the index and recording, which got the increase down to a .86 increase. Central Services is our central purchasing and contracts. This budget includes our copier-lease fleet for the whole town, repairs for various equipment throughout the town. It includes our postage for all of the town buildings, all the town departments. And it has our advertising and publications and printing. And that would be for the town and it doesn't, mostly include the board as I do. The public advertisements for the Board of Education for their purchasing. And then there are office supplies and computer supplies for our purchasing. And those are mostly for all departments within the town except for the funds that are their own. But for all the general fund departments, we by then have a cost savings by having that come through our offices. And we utilize state contracts and consortium contracts to work for, to provide the best cost savings measures we can on these budgets and we kind of help control the distribution of the goods. Page forty-three is our Technology Budget. The technology is made up of the Technology Coordinator and the Assistant Technology Coordinator. There is during the summer time and sometimes throughout the year, there are some interns and students that are at work, that kind of work for the department and that's a part-time payroll account. Overtime is for various times and functions when they need to provide overtime solutions, after-hours for call-ins and alarms or if there's server issues that would require such. We are requesting, one of the floating numbers that Transposition's allow, we're seeing cost increases in the licensing of software. We're seeing that those seem to trend up as we have to continue to add different software programs on there. And a global increase to the budget is a 1.9%. The page forty-five is the Fire Department Budget. As you know, we have a volunteer fire department where we maintain the expenses to try to help this department run. We have a stipend of $1,500 for the members. We have, there's a continual trainings that are required. Service contracts are mostly for the buildings to be maintained through our HVAC and will be fire extinguishers and other types of services that are required. Equipment testing is a big issue always in the Fire Department Budget as it's so important to have all the equipment up to spec and up to the right value, the right values and styles to make the equipment work properly. Medical exams is, there's some specific requirements where for some of the firefighters, we have to pay for certain tests to make sure that they're in physical health that's required as well as supplies for the actual activities and for the medics for the patients. We have supply purchases that we need to make. Remainder of the budget there, we do have some savings within the fuel account here. And as we, we had locked in a nice price on gasoline this year so far and diesel is not locked. And we try to show, reflect that within the budget.
Just a brief interruption, Tom. I wanted to let the selectmen know that some of our staff are here so in case you have questions on their departments. Nate Foley is here, he's our new Park and Rec Director, welcome Nate. Nate will be coming onboard at the end of this month. And we welcome you and thanks for coming tonight, appreciate you being here. And Bernice is with him from the Park and Rec Chairmanship is here too. In addition, Ashley Majerowski, Planning and Zoning and Land Use is here. And Don Guin from Emergency Management is here as well as Bob Shea, Public Works and Fire Department, Water and Sewer, Dave Kozminski, Technology and Other Areas. Mary Pot, Youth and Senior Services is here. And we also have Janet Nocheck from Portland Library. And Rich Lasky, our Assessor is here too. So, in case you have some questions, they're here today. So, sorry for the interruption.
No problem, thank you. So, page forty-seven, we have the Fire Marshals Department. There were no changes to the line items in this budget except for on the payroll with a slight increase for the, what was for wage increases. Page forty-nine is what we call Emergency Dispatch. Emergency Dispatch is made up of three components. It's the Emergency Dispatch Agreement with Middletown. It is the Tyco Monitoring of all our alarms throughout the town. And then one of the pieces that we had not included in the budget, which was supposed to be included in the budget of nineteen, which was the Valley Shore EMS medical, medic dispatch. So, there's a slight increase to the service contract for dispatch. And then the majority of the increase in the budget was the leaving out of the Valley Shore Agreement last year. Page fifty-one is our Police Department. The Police Department at this point now is, you know, is at the level that they had requested at the time when there were some departures in the past where we had some retirements. And so now the people that had retired have been replaced. And the people are out, the officers are out of the academy and fully in the field. So, you see some increases within the payroll as expected. And then as well as in private duty, and there is an offset in the private duty in theory with relation to revenue. So, we have a revenue increase as well as a expense increase. It appears our private, our police have seemed to be working in other departments, in other towns as a effort, as more and more related towns, either Middletown and/or East Hampton have projects, they seem to be called out on, to private duties and those as providing aid and assistance. So, there's some increases in that in the current year as well as expected next year. The remainder of the budget there appears good except we did, as you do see, you know, there appears to be some gas and savings as we had a better rate expected. Emergency Management, Emergency Management is a department where there's a partial funding from a grant in the General Fund. And then, so we kind of put the grant in and then the next year's budget comes in. So, it's a kind of a work in process. I know there's been a change in coordinators, but this, we've kind of needed to leave this budget close to where it was. And there may be some adjustments in the future, but this is mostly stipend for the EMD. There's some fees, there's some expenses for training, for dues. Cell phones are for the Director and the First Select Woman is the two Emergency Management officials in the town. And then there's also some for equipment supplies and some emergency food for the shelter if it is needed to be in service. On page fifty-five is the Building Department, which is made up of the Building Official and one full-time assistant that is split between two departments. And that is, there really is no other changes in that. That one position is a union position, so there's a step included. Now, we're gonna skip fifty-seven through. We're gonna jump to seventy-three because that's all Public Works. So, the Planning Department has the other part of the Land Use Coordinator. I'm sorry, the Land Use Administrator, Office Assistant, as well as a Land Use Administrator and a Land Use EDC Coordinator. So, that's where you see the change there. They're both, those positions, the Land Use Administrator and the Land Use Coordinator are going to be potentially a thirty-hour, proposed thirty-hour work week in this as there's some specific, as there are some additional activities expected with the, some recent development within the town and need for coverage in the department. Otherwise, the department seems to remain very constant. Page forty-one is the Zoning and Enforcement Department. The Zoning and Enforcement Department is made up of the Zoning Enforcement Officer. There's an increase for the payroll. The budget is within, more or less just a budget increase. And the hours there are generally worked less than budgeted. But I believe that the intent is to have that individual work more as these specific projects are required and need to be utilized. Page forty-two is the Planning and Zoning Commission. The, this is another where the lower cog, the Lower River cog kind of dictates our assessment into their program. This is an increase that is more or less set by them that's required by us to maintain as a member in the cog. All the other numbers within the budget remain the same. Page seventy-nine is the Zoning Board of Appeals. There is no change to that budget. The Inland Wetland Commission is on page eighty-one. We have an inland wetlands officer. There is no changes to that as well. We expect hopefully to be within the mark on that budget. Forty-five is what's called the Conservation Commission. And that is a Board Clerk as well as some dues and conference and meetings. No change. The Economic Development Commission. The only change in this is a slight change into marketing programs as they wanted to do some additional marketing programs for their signage program. And for the signage program, I guess they need a little bit more funds. Those don't, can't do it for 3,000, I guess you need a little bit more than that. Capital Expense Commission on page eighty-seven, there is no change. Often the, I guess the actual administrator of the Commissioner actually does a lot of the minute-taking here. But, you know, we're supposed to provide a clerk if they require a clerk, so that's why there is a clerk budget. Page eighty-nine is our allotment to the Chatham Health District. This is a budget per the, per capita rate. Page ninety-one is more or less is a dovphoned department. Page ninety-three is our Social Services Department. These are various organizations that where we provide. They provide usually various services to our residents. And we provide some type of a fee back to them, either a donation or if in the Ride and Dial Ride Program, we have a contract agreement for those two programs. And then we generally have a corresponding grant in that program as well. No change. The Senior Center Budget, there was a reorganization in this budget. So, the individual, there was a part-time assistant. That assistant now has moved to be full-time and moved out of the Park and Rec area. And there has been a ten-hour clerk that has been there. And then there's a shared Director. There's a stipend in this budget for, or not stipend but an additional fee in this budget for the Director. And the majority of the Directorship is within the Youth Service Department. So, that's why you see the increase in the payroll. But there is a decrease within the part-time payroll as the person becomes a full-time component in this, in this, in this budget. The other line items all remain reasonably the same. We have additional items for program services as the department tries to do more programmatic activities for the Waverly Center participants. Ninety-seven is your Municipal Agent of the Elderly, for the elderly. This is more or less where we have the van drivers that utilize our van that we share with Cromwell as well as the other van that we have and we use a car as well. There is a reimbursement from the state that is provided for our services, for some of the, some of the services here. The Senior Center Director does those reports. And then the funds are received by the Finance Department and are recorded within the General Fund. So, that is, that apartment has the drivers as well as the related gas and diesel. Page ninety-nine is our Portland Public Library. The library has, the staffing is at the same staffing levels. The, there has expected savings in the contract database as there is a decrease, was due to making some cuts in databases that are not used at the levels that other resources were. So, they decided to make some cuts to that. So, you see a little bit of a drop there in three six oh one oh. And there was, it seems to be a little bit of cost savings in electricity, so we see a little bit of a drop there. And that's, I think, with a direct relation to some of the HVAC modifications and improvements that we made. So, some of those savings, we expect to be offset by increases unfortunately to the distribution costs. But we do hope, anticipate to see some savings. Page one hundred and one is our Fringe Benefits. We have some planned, as next year we have a, in our, in our defined benefit plan, it's a, there's an early retirement incentive, which is a sixty thirty retirement incentive where if you're there for sixty, if you're sixty years of age and have been here thirty years of service, you can retire out at full retirement. So, there is a, we feel that there's a few parties that will take part in that. So, we have expected some known costs, which is unusual for us to have that in termination benefit pay. So, you see a substantial increase in that line item as we expect that to be the benefits directly related to some of these long-time employees terminating. We have some costs in healthcare that claims have, we've done, you know, have been somewhat difficult. We know trend is difficult within that industry. We've had a real strong renewal offer from our healthcare provider. So, it's not, the increase is there but not as bad as we had expected. We have continual contribution requirements for our pension in our police and our volunteer fire. So, we have those are usually, those are based upon actuarial valuations for our defined benefits. And the defined contribution is six percent of the individuals that are not in the defined benefit plan, they get a six percent of their salary. And that is the remainder for the town component. We do not have any, within this budget nor the Board of Ed budget is the, is the share of the teacher's retirement if that projected cost was to be there. It is not in the towns or in the boards. Page seventy-three, I'm sorry, one oh three, which is our, page oh seventy-three, which is our Risk Management Budget. We actually do not expect an increase in the fees in the, in our risk management pool. What we are seeing in that expected increase is a, an increase in our policy limits for excess cost, excess lim, excess umbrella. So, we're trying to make some improvements on that front, which is resulting in around about, would have about a $25,000 effect. But we're looking at that and that's what, that's what the increase in there is. This also has in it the payment, the $7,300 annual payment for the airline trail environmental insurance that's required to utilize the trail. The participants, ever source and the related participants require, that is part of the agreement. So, that is also in there. And then our ALGL component of our insurance is for all the ALGL throughout the town except for the other department, other funds. That would be like your police officer vehicles, any liability for any of those type of issues. That's what's in, in this figure. Page one oh five is our Debt Service. So, this year is our first year of our, of our $10 million bond, the interest proceeds from that. We did have two other, our two other leases. So, we had three leases coming into, into nineteen. Two of those leases have ended during nineteen. And we have the one lease that we did in eighteen. We're in, doing the third-year payment in this year, our first year of our interest in this bond. And then we are still continuing to pay our refunding for our Board of Ed $9.5 million bond in 2012, the refunding. So, you see, see those payments there. And the, and then also we do not have to have bond issue costs. So, that was the $105,000 difference that you see in miscellaneous. That was our bond issue cost, which also had a corresponding revenue effect and other revenue. So, you'll see other revenue go down by $105,000. And you'll see miscellaneous revenue go up or down by $105,000 as well. And you will see the decrease there. You see, you clearly see the decrease in the principal and interest in the leasing program. So, that was your, one of your fire truck leases from, I think it was about 12 years ago or so. And then it was the other five-year lease that we had had outstanding. These current lease that we had is a six-year lease and we're in the middle of that one. So, that's a nice, you know, that was a kind of a planned decrease there as we knew lease payments were falling off and we knew that there was going to be bond costs coming on. But trying to mitigate that. And then with that, transfers and this, this page, we can hit them as we go through them. But just to speak to the, you'll see an increase in the capital transfer of roughly $100,000 in the town side and the board side remains as constant. And that's, you know, kind of with the corresponding decrease in debt. You try to, if you're gonna lower debt, you want to try to increase capital and vice versa as you don't want that effect to go away as the next year when you add more debt on for something else. So, the intent there is to, if the, and the decrease in the debt would increase into the capital flow. So, we're trying to work with that. On the other departments, more or less, many of them remained the same. Resource Recovery, which we're not talking about tonight, but you'll see increases in there more or less because of the changes in our, in our distribution for disposal of the waste. We have, there was increased cost to us to dispose. And some of the revenues on the bags are lower than we've had. So, we have increased costs of disposal, we have less. We used to back, we used to receive money for our single-stream recycling. Now, we either, luckily we have a zero outlay on that, but some people are actually paying for disposal of that. And then one oh nine is our Contingency and that is a no change. And then one oh nine is our contingency, and that is a no change. So with the transfers, we'll go to page one twenty, which is our, twenty-one nineteen, which is our animal control budget. So the animal control budget is, has a rental agreement with Middletown, and then we have some of the, the sale of the dog licenses, and then the remainder of it is funded by the general fund. The, we have the payroll of the animal control officer, and then we have backup officers that are there on the weekends and other times, obviously, the, the animals that are in the shelter need to be cared for, so we have to have different coverages. The other expenditures within this budget have really remained quite constant. We have not asked for too much more of an increase, it's more with relation to salary, part-time payroll as, as there's continued need for coverage there. Page one twenty-four is our youth service budget. So the youth service budget here, the, they have the youth service activities that we, we have there, still is in, we still have in the twelve thousand dollar grant, which is likely to not be received, that was more of a workforce incentive grant, but it's one of those ones where it does come back and forth, so it's kind of hard to take it out of the budget, so we kind of leave it within the budget. But the likelihood of receiving those proceeds is, is probably not so likely. But the remain, the, the youth service monies generally remain quite stable. The monies from DSS are, when our, I guess our, we call it a therapist, our worker goes in and can be able to bill back, we get some of the money back for those services. And we have a programmatic fees, and that programmatic revenue, that, that program does run quite well and provides some service. So the, the transfer has remained quite flat in this, in this budget. Expenses have the, the director as well as the, the temporary payroll of the employees that kind of help run the program. And the remainder of the services here remain constant. Page one thirty-two, which is our park and rec budget. Park and rec is a tricky one, as it always is, it's a, it's a hard mark to hit, it's a really hard one to judge the programmatic revenue. So we, we, this, the new director is inheriting this budget, so he'll, he'll get the chance to work with it and learn it and make his own. But at this, at this time, we are basing this off of what we had developed in the past. The, we're, we're projecting similar revenues to seventeen, kind of in, in a sort, and we're hoping that those revenues hit that way. They did not really hit there in eight, in eighteen. We're looking for a little bit of a, a better revenue push. Obviously, the more that the revenue can come in, the more that the offset will be from the general fund required. There is a transfer in, in the general fund side, and that is covered, we do have the payroll, so there's a payroll, in the, in this budget here, the, the director is included, and then there's a full-time assistant within this budget to hopefully generate some of those revenues, control the, work with the various systems that are in place to have good tracking of the programmatic revenues and the program activity and helping the services to the public that utilize all the many park and rec programs that we run. The teen recreation, the clerical payroll goes down as that clerical payroll was the temporary clerical payroll for the purse part-time individual. The teen recreation payroll is the actual people that help with the temporary payroll that we have that runs the summer program activities and program activities throughout the year. The, you'll see a jump in medical insurance here, and that was an estimate, but based on the, the individuals, we will try to work as we get more of a picture of who is participating, what the numbers would, will be there. But the previous director had waived coverage, and then there was only a half of another employee there. So you'll see some increase there. The remainder of the, of the activities that we had left, more or less remain the same. We had built in some of the hopefully projected increases based on some of the additional parks that are out there in, in our electricity numbers, maybe. We're giving an estimate, and then hopefully in, in the water and sewer line item, a little bit there. But we'll, we'll have to see as, as, as those come to fruition. The expenses on the programmatic side was about sixty-three, it budgeted last year to sixty-one thousand. This year, there's not really much change there. So it's more or less on a fluctuation on the, on the payroll, on the, on the departmental side, and, and then you'll, so you see a little bit of an increase on the transfer side, and you see some savings in the senior center side, as well as in the insurance and the general fund side of this. So those are the, those are the budgets that relate to all other funds that are not public works or capital. Any department leaders, directors wanting to say anything, or wanted to say anything?
I have a question.
Sure.
Are the, most of these payroll increases the result of the contracts, like a, a union contracts or?
Which, which ones are you, throughout the whole budget or specific ones?
Yeah, just in general.
In general, correct, yeah. In general, this, they're, they're expected based on the contracts that will be negotiated. So we know they're, you know, so we're basing it off of an estimate. So they're not, some, some police has a standard contract, so the other ones are in negotiations. So we're working through those numbers with everyone, with, with people that we expect to be in the positions at the time. There were, the budgets that showed us some transitions were in the planning and zoning. You saw that there was a, moving from one of the full-time people to part-time, and then a little bit increase in hours in one of the part-time, to a more part-time position, but more hours there. There was the, there was the, more or less the director, the, the full-time director position in the senior center was down.
Yeah.
To a smaller item there, moving over the, obviously needing coverage, needing the assistant to be there longer in the general fund, moving that person from park and rec to the general fund. And then the director has moved on, so now we have a new director in park and rec with a assistant to help in that position.
So like on the park and rec, that payroll, because there's a new director, there was like a new negotiated salary?
The more or less, I think the increase there is not necessarily the director, it's the, it's the assistant, because the assistant was half-time.
Oh.
And now it's full-time.
And at, do the, at what level of hours worked does the town provide medical benefits? In other words, if you work thirty hours, do you get medical benefits?
Yes, thirty hours.
Okay.
Sure.
On page one thirty-two, number zero three zero three, what is that property rental number, that increase? Well, what is the property rental, let's see, and they, you may answer it by telling me what the property is.
The property rental fee there, I believe that is...
Oh, sorry, decrease, but increase overall over the past few years, but I'm just curious, what property is this? What is that number?
I want to, you test my knowledge on that. I believe it is the Browns, the, the big park with the pavilion. I believe that's when they rent out to...
Charges for services?
No, this is, that's a revenue, that's the estimated revenue.
I think it's the use, I think it's the use of the school buildings, isn't it?
The property rental fee, I believe, is the use of the pavilion out at the...
Yeah, it's revenue. This is the revenue from the Riverfront Park rentals by...
Correct.
That's what it is?
Yeah. That's why it's not, that's why it's not as high as a, that's why it's lower than it was, because it doesn't get to the level.
Right, I'm just curious what property was...
That's what it was.
There's no other property for park and recs.
I couldn't even think of that one.
Does any, does any rental though?
That's the one.
And on economic development, what are their utilities? Is that for like fuel for their car, when they use one?
Let me, what, can you tell me the page, Ben?
No, I didn't write that one down, sorry.
Sure.
It's about EDC, in the seventies, right?
E five?
Sorry, sorry, I didn't write that down.
Oh yeah, they call it utilities, it's, it's, it's really, it's marketing programs. So it's a marketing program, it's the money they utilize to market the town, so...
But is that a, a set program, or is this just, they, they use it as a marketing program per se, or are they paying a fee as part of a marketing?
That, no, it's not, it's not a fee. It is also, so say, if you're going to acquire banners for downtown to say this, or you're going to put a sign under the year to say, this is our EDC, you know, or whatever, it's that. So I think they're trying to enhance the signage.
Almost like advertisement or what?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we weren't paying a, a program fee.
No, no, no.
Okay.
No.
That was my question.
Sure.
Page ninety-five on the senior center. Telecommunications.
Yes, we're trying to offer cable, which we had, it's been an ongoing issue for years, working with the former director, trying to get that to get going. We tried to come up with other methods and ways to do it at a cheaper, more economical way. It, it didn't, it doesn't really, it didn't work out for the, for the seniors, for the users of the Waverly Center.
So is this for internet or TV?
It's more for cable, cable access.
Okay.
And we had, and at the time, it was the, you know, we were, we were, we hadn't figured out what it was going to be or going to be, so that's our, was our estimate at the time to put a placeholder in there.
Okay.
But that will be, I think they're going to try to come out Friday or so to get that going, that people are, the users really want it, and trying to want, try to work toward getting it in there installed for them.
On page one oh three, you talked about the insurance increase, and back then, we knew about the, the increase for the airline trail, we were going to have to get that insurance. But I believe the total increase now is about twenty-five thousand. Like, because my first question is, that seventy-five hundred number, give or take, for the airline trail?
Sure.
After a certain point, if this doesn't produce any claims, would they consider lessening this policy? You know, I, I get why, back during the negotiations, Eversource required this policy, and a lot of it has to do with the contamination and, you know, or...
Are you saying Eversource or the actual insurer?
No, the insurer at some point, if we go on years with no claims...
No, we just renewed that, and it was, it was more or less the same fee. It's a three, it's a three-year proposal. They don't, no, I mean, they go out, as Kirma goes out, they don't, it's not through Kirma, Kirma works as your broker to get it, but it's a direct policy.
And there were no claims on that?
There are no claims.
I think over time, if we have a history and pattern of no claims, and just because I remember the language Eversource wanted was pretty specific to certain line items, and I think after a certain while, there's, it's either going to happen or it isn't. And I think policies should get reduced over time, I would think.
Well, I think what they're trying to, I guess is if somebody could go onto the, onto their trail and cause environmental damage. So that's what the theory of the policy is for. So I don't know how it would really go down if they require it, unless it's, unless the, you know, unless the carrier wants to give you a better deal. But I mean, it seems like if the, if Eversource, if that's the party that requires that, you know, they're going to continue to require it, there's not a big market for environmental insurance.
That's what I'm wondering, it's not going away.
Yeah, kind of.
And could you talk about the other, I think the total increases were in the twenty-five range, what were the other driving factors for that large increase?
Policy limits, I mean, I don't, I don't like to get too public on the policy limits of everything, but you, you, we had a, a standard limit that we've had for new, many years of our umbrella. We were anticipating, trying to increase that by a number.
Yep.
To get to whatever the next number is. The quotes that we've received to get to that number was a twenty-five thousand dollars a year price. That's the increase.
Okay.
It's saying, we're, you know, we're trying to get some additional umbrella coverage.
Nope, I get that.
Okay, so why did we want the additional umbrella coverage? Was it because of like the new park coming online, or did we just feel we didn't, weren't carrying enough coverage for all the previous years? I mean, is there a reason why we wanted to increase, increase the umbrella coverage?
I mean, there's, I mean, there's, I guess, there, there's numerous ones, it's hard to pinpoint a specific. There's this various risk factors that occur, you know, within the, the town, that could occur, so you were just looking at additional coverage. You know, there's, obviously with the new park, there's possibly a water park, there's other water parks in town that are, you know, that generate a lot of revenue to the town, where we own the land, we own the, you know, the quarry or whatnot, there are, you know, there's, there's other factors. So it was just something that, you know, the first luckman and I were discussing, and we're, you know, putting together, you know, proposal of, you know, maybe there's a, it's a good idea to, you know, maybe increase the limit on that.
Okay. So like where I'm going is, is like, you know, we brought on the airline trail, we're going to be bringing on the Route Seventeen Park, we have the brownstone, you know, the water park, we might try to get a boat launch going. All these things, as we're having more activities in town, do you feel that's creating the need for the additional coverage? Because we're like, there's more exposure, there's more people out there doing stuff, recreating, doing recreation or?
No, I mean, I mean, I guess my take is just, I've been here maybe ten or so years and eleven years, and the number has been the same number.
Oh.
You know, so things go up.
Time to go up.
You know, dollar values occur, things have happened, you know, lawsuits occur. So is it, you know, is it time to, you know, as the town continues to grow and, and things that happen, do we want to have that coverage? I mean, it's one of those things, you don't have to do it, it's just, we're trying, trying to get to the next level of coverage. And, you know, we, we worked with Kirma for a long while, they went out and did a lot of quotes and processes. They may come back with a different program that they will know more about, but at the current, the, the numbers that I have at the time when I put the budget, we put the budget there, Susan, put the budget together. You know, the number that we came up with was, we, we had a twenty-five thousand dollar number that was getting us to the next level. The further levels were, you know, they were just too high.
Didn't make sense.
It was, it didn't, it didn't, it didn't make, it was, yeah, the number was too big, and it probably didn't really warrant it. But it's specific to say pinpoint that, I mean, I don't, I'm hoping that.
All right.
If there was, we would try to take a risk, we would try to take, you know, we, we work closely with the risk management team from Kirma, and when we do determine risk factors, we try to mitigate them, and we try to work with them, we have a safety committee meeting that we, we meet with. We have a health committee that my French coordinator coordinates, and try to work through to save, you know, to save the town monies and get people to be healthy and to get, you know, not to get injured. Does it occur? Sure, it occurs, but we try to do our best and try to do trainings, and have trainings get occurred, and have people go to training so that these things work out. But... But, uh, that was, you know, that was what that is. That's what that proposed increase. Otherwise, the, uh, for that budget, the, what... For, for the Kerma for this year, it was a zero percent increase on the, on the fee. That was their proposed increase on, on the, on the lap, which is, that's nice.
And did the policy encompass the new park? Or I'm sure they don't have to list out each property the town owns, but regardless, they're aware of the new park?
Yeah, I mean, they're aware of all, um, are they aware of the specifics of the park? Yeah, I mean, I think we've, we've definitely talked about it with them.
This was not recommended from Kerma. This was my recommendation.
I just wanted to... And I, I get that, and I'm probably on board with that, just, you know... But the, as long as they know about the new park and our existing policy covers that, that was my question.
Yeah, I mean, we'll just... It'll be... We'll get... It'll get... We'll, uh, when it gets to a more substantial build, they'll, they'll add it as a, as a probably an area more. The way they have a... There's different ways... There's different groupings. There's, uh, like marine equipment. There's automobile equipment. And then it's more or less grounds and buildings. And that list is big and, you know, has all your schools, all these huge things on it. So I think it would just probably be added as Route Seventeen Park or whatever.
My question would be, are we going to be anticipating, once it's online, will there then be another increase? Or you feel that the policy we have now will cover that part?
I mean, you have a good question. I don't, I don't know, to be honest with you. I could look into that, but I'm not sure. I, I would think it's not... It's not gonna... I don't anticipate it to materially change it. You know what I mean? Could there be a slight change? Yeah, it could be. I mean, you would think anytime your asset value goes up.
The, the only reason it's... I'm not so worried about that. But for example, the airline trail was a seventy-five hundred dollar. That's a big deal.
Yeah, that... It won't be a separate fee, unless you get an environmental policy or something.
No, no, no. Will the increase for the park, for example, be seventy-five hundred? Should we be budgeting for this? Uh, or is it gonna be, like you said, minimal, no big deal?
I mean, more... Most of the time on these types of things, when, because I mean, there's, there's improvements you make all the time throughout the town. It, it, the ebbs and flows kinda work themselves out. We've brought this up numerous times to Kerma. I don't... I've never heard them say, "Oh, geez, we need to... You need to tell us this in advance, 'cause it's gonna make your premiums go up."
I mean, it's a pretty... Ben, it's a pretty common, um, asset that many, if not most municipalities have in terms of parks. And certainly Portland's park is no bigger or different than a lot of the parks that, like South Windsor has or Newington. So parks are not necessarily something they're going to hone in on. They come out at least once a year and talk with us about our assets and what's changed. We tell them everything, um, so they're aware. And then they go back and look at our numbers. The experience that Kerma has had, that's our carrier, has been pretty good. So the, the rates have been reasonable for us over the last several years.
Correct.
Some of the rates went up when we experienced all the bad weather. When we had such snow on our roofs that we had to, uh, take shovels and snow blowers and get snow off our roofs. And when we had to mitigate the effects of severe flooding at some of our buildings on Main Street. That had an effect because of the payout. But when you bring on, um, assets that aren't atypical of a municipality, I haven't noted that they increase us. The, the EverSource contract required us to have the environmental, 'cause we're leasing that property. We don't own it.
Yep.
So that's why we have that. And this is, I think, prudent in terms of increasing our coverage and always revisiting that, just based on our litigious society and the way many municipalities experience, um, their, their risk, and they manage it. So I felt that at this point, we needed to revisit that. We hadn't in a long time. And so this was the number they gave us.
I just wanted to make sure in the future, we're not gonna get a ten thousand dollar because of the new park. But if you've already mentioned to the company, and the company's already written this policy...
And I'll talk to them, Ben.
And you guys have a comfort level.
Yep. We talk with our agent, um, all the time. And we should... We can certainly call her and talk to her about that.
Well, well, downplay it. Let them know they already wrote it. They already gave us the number.
She, she'll be aware of it, 'cause we have talked to her.
Yeah, there's more of it.
That's where I'm going with this.
Yeah, it seems like more, they have a more... It seems like they have more of a concern on, um, individual, uh, the vehicles that are listed separately. That's their... That has, seems to be, has more of a play. So the years when I do, we do the big lease programs, that, it goes, you know, you know, the stuff you take off lowers it. The stuff you go on adds it, you know? And you'll see those as bigger hits, more than property. The, the... They, they more or less wanna know, okay, okay, that's where your building sits. That's what the estimated value is. That's where this park sits. That's the value.
They also look at how much we're investing in the town. So they wanna know that we are improving our sidewalks, or we're improving our roads, that we're keeping the risks to a minimum in our public attributes. So those are things we look at, too. So the fact that the park is, is new means that, you know, it'll be leveled, there won't be rivets, the fencing will be proper, and the lighting will be appropriate, things of that nature. So they like to see that. And in fact, I think they would rate you on a better scale if they know you're making improvements. If we're making no improvements and we're not doing anything, we're stagnating, that's not a good thing. They will ask us, "What kinds of improvements are you making in your town?" So I think they're pleased that we are making improvements to our parks, as well as our sidewalks and our roads, um, as well as improving our equipment and making sure that our fire and police departments are properly equipped with new vehicles, as opposed to ones that might be risky because their wear and tear is too great. So those are the kinds of questions they ask us when they come out. And they wanna make sure that we're managing the town sufficiently to make sure that we're mitigating risk. We're all about risk.
And when we got those increases from the snow off the roof, I think I was on the board at the time, but we ended up getting a very substantial check back.
They compensated us greatly, yeah.
Yeah, so...
And Kerma in the past, remember, there was the Dooley Youth Services Building that was down under the bridge? They paid to have that building removed, um, because they felt that was hazardous to our risk. Uh, and as you mentioned, a lot of the snow removal, they helped us with. And they also, um, assisted with, uh, as I said, the mitigation due to the flooding at the biz, at the fire department, at the senior center, and that... We had some repeated exposures in that regard. We have taken steps, um, to reduce that risk. And fortunately, the season was a little bit better in terms of the weather and its effects on our buildings. And, um, I know Bob's crew has really taken it upon themselves to make sure that our buildings are properly, um, taken care of. We're looking, remember, at redoing the roof at Company Two. And we're looking at doing, redoing the roof at the town garage. Uh, the HVAC in this building was redone. We're looking at a grant, uh, that Janet and the library board has obtained with a match that they are putting up to redo carpeting, uh, improve the furniture, improve the layout of the desk in the main, um, entryway of the building. So there's many things that we're doing to make sure that our buildings are up to par, vehicles, as well as, um, our parks and other attributes. Spring Street's gonna start. I'm sure you saw the markings on the roads. It's gonna start soon.
And you might not know this, um, if we did have to start helping out with the teacher retirement number any fall, or should we not even?
Fifty-nine thousand is the... For this year, but I think it doubled plus for the next year. And then again, it'll, it'll increase, and I, I can't predict what it'll be. So...
Right.
I think it's inappropriate to put it in, because I don't happen to agree...
Right.
Of the way that state has, uh, proposed that. And I think many municipalities would agree with me.
Sure.
On the police department, the overtime.
The private duty overtime?
Well, let's see. Oh, wait a minute. One, three, oh, oh, two. So my question is, if we're fully staffed, would there be a need for less overtime potentially? Or is, or is overtime, like if they work on Sunday, they get overtime no matter what?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think fully staffed is relative, if you were to talk to Captain Malardo, but, um...
He's not here.
No, he's not.
Yeah, he's not here. So I, I think that, you know, what are you, what are you saying? You know, it's hard for me to speak.
Well, you said I wrote down that we, we... At least I understood it.
Twelve officers now, and they're funded for the full year. Last year, they weren't funded for the full year, if I'm remembering correctly.
So my thinking is, if we didn't have enough officers last year, or if we weren't fully staffed, that maybe the other guys were having to work more, so we were paying more overtime. So if we have a fully staffed department, maybe the overtime number should be different.
It could go a little bit, two ways there. You know, one, what you're saying could very well be come to fruition, which would be great. We'd have some more savings. Two would be, now there's more guys that could work overtime. So if you have a big case or something, you have more people that would come in, and therefore, there's more overtime charges. I still think that, you know, he could, you know, I believe the department continues to strive to have the appropriate amount of coverage when there are different items. And I know that's always been a, a goal of the department, is have the appropriate coverage, so that, uh, you know, the people weren't either by themselves or in situations that they don't wanna be in. So one year, and then ten, twelve thou... Thirteen thousand the next year, it's kinda, it's a hard number to, to kinda question on.
I have a question. The, uh, the anticipated cost for Chatham Health has gone up a little larger than the past. Kinda sticks in my mind, I remember reading something about the changes within it, but could you just speak to why it's a little larger than it has been?
Some of the staffing has, um, increased in the department, because some of the, some of the towns, um, had felt they weren't properly staffed for sufficient hours in a week. So they wanted to increase the sanitary hours. In addition, there's a new director coming on, and the director that is leaving in October is going to bridge, so that the new director will have some overlap and work, um, together with the new director, which that person will be starting soon. I think the bottom line is, some of the towns, uh, and I know that East Hattam was one, and I believe East Hampton also made comment that they could not stay in the district if there wasn't better coverage in terms of their town. So the district felt that we need to have the towns to make this work. So, um, some, a lot of the costs did go toward staffing. What happens over the years is, when you try to save money and they don't hire people, you see some effects of that over time that are not necessarily positive. I could say it that way. We also lost Hattam. Hattam used to be in the district. They left. And they're with another, uh, they're with another arrangement right now. I'll also point out that it's way before anybody on the board's time, but we spent a lot more on health services when we were independent. And we ran the visiting nurse. We gave a subsidy, a fairly good-sized, uh, subsidy to the visiting nurse at the time, as well as a sanitarian that served us full-time, as well as a health director that we had to have as mandated by the state for a part-time health department. So in terms of the overall cost, I think if you looked back ten years ago, twelve, fifteen years ago, when we were independent, we probably were spending at or about that amount. I don't have that number now, but... And, and you're not getting the same level of service. I mean, when we had the visiting nurses, there was a lot different level of service for our community. We gave that up because of, because of cost and just because of the way, um, things have evolved. Good question. I mean, it's not unlike the, uh, the regional council governments. I mean, can you argue they're saving you money? Are they getting you more grants? Is it working well? You know, they, they serve us well, um, but they don't have an overabundance of staff, but they do assist us. They assist us with the village design district. They do those reviews for no cost, as long as they're the lower tiers. They also assist us with the Route Sixty-Six corridor study. They, they are, they are managing that grant that we got, that's looking at the East Hampton, Portland, Route Sixty-Six corridor. They also assist us with other transportation grants, as well as, they did the speed testing for, you know, we did some of the speed testing of cars on our roads. They did that for us. And they also are available for consultation in terms of, uh, certified planners that they have on staff, and they assist us with that as well. But they went up this year, more than two percent. Went up substantially. So in our efforts to do some of these regional efforts, sometimes it helps. Sometimes you have to kinda go through the growing pains before they actually begin to deliver, um, some substantial changes. But there is a fee to these... It used to be mid-state regional planning? You may remember that.
Yeah, I do.
That was a far lesser fee associated with that.
I have one question for Bob. How are we doing for volunteer numbers?
So that's a great question.
'Cause I don't wanna go paid. Ever.
Neither do I.
Just gotta start with that.
That's right. And we, uh, a hundred percent agree. We love our volunteer part of it.
So I think the budget that is, um, offered to the department by the board is, is a good one, and we seem to be able to manage the department. As far as equipment on the capital side, you know, we have to stay ahead of that, um, for two reasons. Number one, it needs to serve and protect the community and do it well, but it also needs to serve the members. And when I say that, it needs to be equipment that we can ride in that is, um, as safe as possible. So when our apparatus becomes twenty, twenty-five years old, it becomes an issue related to safety. Not only that, but we really see the curve, um, after about twenty years, um, in the maintenance costs of, of those trucks. And I really see that now, because I measure it much more closely. So, um, you know, with that said, you know, we have some, um, things to look forward to in the future for apparatus, but we seem to be able to do that. I think the, the, you know, leasing program that we started twelve years ago set a tone for, you know, the way we purchase equipment that is very expensive, but that's gonna last twenty to twenty-five years. And I think that either municipal leasing, bonding, what we've been doing is a benefit for the taxpayers as far as, you know, just spreading that payment out over time and, and using that tool, um, you know, to, to, to lower the burden on cost for that. So because, you know, I could say when I first became chief, I could buy a piece of fire apparatus for three hundred thousand dollars. That is now six fifty. Same thing. Not much different, but the color. But, uh, you know, that's kinda where the industry's going, and, and, and anybody that deals in that type of vehicle can see that, not only there, but highway or, or any other industry. But with that said, I had sixty-four active members when I started, and I have forty-eight now. I have a lot of members, but they hang on and become social and really get involved in the department, because it becomes a family, and they don't wanna leave that as a whole. But as they get older, the requirements, um, and when I say that, the physical requirements on us, um, is getting much more stringent. Our medical costs are up, as you can see, they climb every year. We do our best. That number would be much higher if I had that many active people, but I don't. So it's not going up as much as the industry is pushing us to go, because what's happening is we're... The age has dropped based on standards. You know, they're looking for firefighters to have stress tests. Stress tests now at forty-five, if they fit a criteria that's much different than it was before. So and our physicals are probably moving towards happening every year versus every other year, depending on if you're interior, exterior, or your age. We used to not have to go every year till we were fifty-five. Now you have to go every year if you're forty-five, doesn't matter if you're standing outside or going inside. So those things are changing. A lot of that stuff and what we do and the risks involved in that are creating the lower numbers for volunteerism. It's getting tough out there for what we do. Our fires are bigger. Our hazards are bigger. Our liability related to what we do seems to be getting bigger. And people are starting to think about that impact on their personal lives. So volunteerism across the nation is dropping by five percent a year, related to fire, volunteer firefighters. So it's difficult. So right now, we're good, but I do worry every year, um, the amount of individuals that we have to respond. We do good at night. We do very good on the weekends if we're here, um, but daytime is really difficult. Your volunteers go to work to support their families. And we're very lucky to have town employees that are able to respond, but even that is becoming very limited. You know, we're losing those, um, just because they don't have the time. They're working second jobs, and, um, their families are getting bigger, and they're busy with their families. their families and what their kids are doing at the time, so they just don't have the time. We have to train three hundred and fifty hours a year just to make our mandates. So just think about that. That's not including the calls. And for any volunteer fireman, woman, to get a benefit from the town, they have to do a hundred and ten calls a year. So they're pretty committed, but those numbers are dropping, when I say active. They meet all that criteria to basically get some type of benefit in the relation to a pension or a stipend. So, you know, we're moving in the direction of, you know, trying to recruit. We get the young kids, and guess where I lose them? They go to college and they're gone. And a lot more kids are going to college, which I think is great, and I think it's great that they come to the fire department, because I think it's a good place for them to be at that time of their life, to learn some good skills, some skills outside of their immediate family and become part of another family, but then I think we lose them because they explore the world, and, you know, they go on to college, which is great, but, you know, I don't see too many come back, which is unfortunate. Years ago, they used to come home, and they'd serve in their home, and they'd go to work for what they were, you know, went to school for, but now they're gone. They send us notes and cards and pictures of them in different countries, and so, I mean, I have one that wanted to, went to college, now she just wants to be in another country. So it's different. But, yeah, so we're measuring that, and we put a lot of extra pressure on those guys that serve us during the day. And now they serve me in two ways. You know, those are, those are my employees as a department head in town, as well as a fire chief, so it's difficult. But we're good, but we should really, you know, years to come, we really got to keep an eye on it, and we're, I'm doing my best. I think this is my seventeenth year, don't know how much longer, but, you know, we want to continue to promote, we're, we have a great explorer program for the kids, we start at fourteen now, so if we can get them engaged, but there is just so much that we have to do now to stay compliant. You wonder, you sit back sometime and say, what are they trying to do? What are they trying to do with public safety? Rather than, you know, I mean, some of it's important, but there's certain things that it's like, geez, you know, are you pushing us out? On the volunteer side, or are you trying to make it work, you know, for communities that would have difficulty with a three-point-five million dollar budget to, to serve a minimum staffing department? That would probably be what it would cost us. So, but we're doing it.
Question.
We're doing it.
We don't want that.
No.
Give us some work.
So, we're, you, you support us the best you can, which kind of keeps them coming back, and we have a wonderful banquet every year to, to award them for their service, and which you, you grant us, and which, which goes a long way. So we'll be having that in April, and we look forward to, you know, awarding those who deserve it and having some time. We have the other towns come in and cover, so if you see different trucks here on one night, that's why. So, thanks.
Tomorrow night, we're going to have a regularly scheduled meeting that'll start at seven-thirty. I don't think we need the workshop tomorrow night, based on the fact that we'll meet in a workshop next Tuesday, the twenty-sixth. That will be Public Works and Capitol, Water Sewer we'll talk about, as well as the Board of Education. And if we need to, we'll go to the next night. Typically, we've been able to manage these workshops under the two dates, tonight and the next Tuesday. Any other research you want done before next week, let us know. If you don't know tonight, let us know.
I had just one question. You know, we do have a piece of property on Main Street that is not being used right now, the old fire police station.
Yes.
And I was wondering if that should be sold?
It's something we can talk about.
And that would bring in revenue, on the revenue side.
I don't know that, are you using that, Bob, that space for storage, or?
So, it has no utilities. You know, there's no heat or water to the building, but it is used for some, some storage, some minor storage, now grounds uses it for products and things like that, so it helps up, you know, for the time being, related to some minor storage. I had some thoughts about use of that building for building maintenance, to kind of get them out of the dungeon where they are and give them more space in an easier way, but yeah, sure, I think it's worth the value they can add to that.
Yeah, we tried renting it again, like we used to do, for the cellar savers. The Historical Society looked at it, they turned us down, and Little League looked at it, and they turned us down. There's a lot of needs in that building that need to be addressed.
Why doesn't it have water?
It has water, but we turned it off.
Oh, you just turned it off?
We turned it off.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not heated in the winter.
Okay.
Yeah. But it's a good question, it's something this board can certainly talk about.
Yeah, we need work, for sure, and, you know, to utilize it for rental, there's a staircase in there that's not compliant, some of those spiral staircases, so, you know, for that aspect, yeah, there's nothing there without a lot of money being spent.
Yeah.
It's also.
I mean, if it needs to be used, that's fine, huh? But if it's not being used, it's a piece of real estate that could be purchased, and then the tax benefit to the town would be, would be good. However, if you need storage, you may need to build a building for that, so.
You can just use your waste room, you're right.
Don't forget, we have that spare lot on Middle Hattam if you want to start selling lots, you know? We got that, we bought two with the Keegan piece, so if you have that small little lot in the front, just bringing it up.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else? Yes, 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 Jan?
Well, on the draw, my opportunity was getting away. Don't want to miss my shot. I don't, I'll read this book to you now, no, not really.
Okay.
No, I have some facts and figures, but the main thing is, at the library, we just, we serve everyone. There aren't many places in the world, I'm not saying it's to brag about us, but there aren't a lot of places left where anyone can come in, different ages, you know, whatever your intellectual capacity, whatever your income. We've got various people, some very needy to learn how to use email, need a lot of hand-holding, others come in and we don't even see them, they're in there, on their laptops and using wireless, and, you know, are meeting in a meeting room and getting some business done. We have, you know, all kinds of situations, all kinds of needs are met. So I just wanted to mention that in the budget request, there is a, a increase there for the books. It is one thousand dollars, and it brings it up to, I believe, forty-six thousand. And I was taking a stroll down Memory Lane, and I thought, boy, I think we used to have more than that. And we did, in two thousand and two, we actually had a higher amount for books, it was like a two-and-a-half percent decrease during, since that time, because it has gone down and up. Excuse me, excuse me, but the, the thing is that although we don't have to buy expensive reference books anymore, so we've been able to absorb some of the changes, but now we're buying ebooks, e-audiobooks, and they're really in demand, and unfortunately, their costs are very high, because publishers won't give libraries a break on those things, as they will on books, that you can negotiate discounts. So unfortunately, it's, it's really a tight budget to try and really have a good collection at this point. So I just wanted to bring that up, if people see an increase, that it isn't just, you know, some kind of fluff that we really, I asked for more, obviously, but, you know, whatever we could get would be helpful. So right now, we have, the Friends of the Library helps us by buying DVDs, and they're willing to pay for some of the new streaming services perhaps, for DVD, for movies. And the, the board has actually given us the Hoopla funding this year. Hoopla is, if you haven't had a chance to look at it, it's a pay-for-use thing, so it's a little problematic that some of these things are pay-for-use. Who knows? People have really liked it, and we've got, you know, a couple hundred people or so that are using it and really appreciating it. And, but that is something that you can get the DVDs online, or the movies online, but it's mostly ebooks and e-audiobooks, and they can get them right away, whereas in our other services, there's quite a waiting list, because they're very, very popular, and the libraries can't afford to get a lot of them. As I say, we just don't get a discount, unfortunately, on ebooks. So in order to have good library collections these days, it's, you know, you're, you're doing the legacy service, the good print books and magazines and such, but we also have to make room for these things, especially, you think of the younger generation, but everybody, travelers, business people and all, I've got their Kindles, you know, when they're traveling and such things, so, you know, the personal devices. So it's very convenient for people, it's great for nonfiction type of things too, as well as leisure and fun. So we're just trying to keep moving forward and appreciate whatever support you can give us. Thank you. And, do you have any questions for the library? The library?
So, what I will tell you.
Ninety-nine is in the book.
I, you know, I told Jan that once they start getting farther along in the process of doing the renovations, that, that she, you know, they should come and give a presentation here so people will be aware, because I mean, I've been, I've been there because I've been on the, on their liaison, and I've heard about the good things they're trying to do here, so I told her that I thought it'd be a really good idea, that once they get through this next phase and they're ready to really do it, to come and present to everyone here so everyone's aware.
Yeah, we're getting, we're meeting with the architects this week. Silver Petricelli is working with us at this point, and so we'll learn a little bit more. So very soon, we will be giving more, more information. Yes. As Susan had mentioned, has to do with carpeting, furnishings, the desk. We hope to design the desk to make it very accessible, and there are some things that aren't really up to code for the staff behind there, we found out as we looked into it. So I think it's one of those things you don't really think much about till you see the change. When it's done, it's going to be, I think, very useful and very, very attractive.
Very generous of the library board, because this is their memorial fund, or?
The endowment fund is actually, yeah, the fund that's been invested, yeah. We have the memorial fund for ongoing things, but the endowment fund has been earning some dollars, and it's good now, so we're using them. It's a good thing, yeah.
The other thing with regards to, you know, we've talked at length about some of the services they provide, and right now, one of the funds is going to provide the funding for their Hoopla program. But what I told Jan and the, the board is to really look at, this would be, you know, start collecting your data in the usage, I mean, it's a newer program, and really look at if this is going to be a consistent program, that we have to look about whether we have to really intend to, to provide more support from the town with regards to it. So for now, it's being covered by that, but we probably need to look further down the road.
Yes.
Are there any new positions, or is the payroll increases just increases in the current staff?
Yes, I think there's a negotiation coming up, so they were perhaps, you know, careful to, yeah.
You haven't added a part-time position?
We have not. We have a part-time person in the youth services, we have a couple of part-time people that work on the desk and doing various tasks to keep us going. So, yeah, we haven't added any. I'd love to give them some more hours, and I ask for that, but I understand it's not happening right now, but.
How many full-timers do you have?
Five, or is it six? I always, can't remember whether I counted myself. It's, yeah, there's five, and, yep, so. I can send you the notes with the description of the staffing, if you'd like, the setup.
I think you do a nice job, by the way.
Thank you.
Very nice library.
Oh, thank you, yeah. A lot of people contribute, and we have great volunteers with the Friends and board, it's pretty amazing, yeah, so, very nice. We're going to honor a lady who's been coming in to help us shelve DVDs for many years. I'm going to forget her last name. Friend, good heavens, I'm sorry, what a dodo. I can't remember her last name, but I'll, I'll let you know, because she just decided to kind of retire finally, but she's been volunteering, it's been wonderful, so, you know, that people will keep at something like that, yeah.
Any other questions for Jan? Any other department you want reports from? I see Mary Dickerson has arrived with the beautification committee. There's a little bit of an increase in marketing this year, not a lot, but there's some.
It's our year to do the signs again. We go through the signs that the town sponsored in the industrial park every third year, and so this is the year that we'll go through and replace the ones that need to be replaced. And if there's any, we have possibly new businesses coming in, so we'll provide them with signs too. But it's every third or fourth year, and we've been lucky that the snow hasn't been high, so they care better when, when not a snowy winter.
Thank you.
I did reach out to Captain Malaro. He is, there's some police investigations that are ongoing, which did not allow him to get away, but hopefully maybe he'll be able to try to make the next, the next meeting.
That'd be good.
But he was unavailable due to the police activity.
Okay, good.
Thank you all.
Thank you. So we'll, we'll close the meeting at eight-thirty.